Hello, school board members.
My name is Tucker.
My name is Ryan.
My name is Annabelle.
My name is Domok.
My name is Claire.
Tucker.
We are some of third grade students at KES.
We've been learning about Native Americans. We learned about their houses, their symbols, their transportation, their food, their hunting, their art, and their culture.
We've learned that Abenaki people are ones who live in this area.
One of the things that we learned that we can do to honor the Abenaki people who lived here before us is to create a land acknowledgement statement that can be posted and spoken at school meetings and events, as well as places around Kensington. Some reasons we think it's a good idea include to honor the Native Americans and to know
To honor them so they're not forgotten and so everyone knows that we're on native land.
To support the Native Americans and to remember the Native Americans.
To teach other Abenaki Americans to keep their history.
So they'd like to read the statement that they especially for you guys. Ready? Does it sound like this? Kensington Elementary School is located on the dockina, which is a traditional ancestral home of the Abenaki.
And 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 Abenaki people's past and present.
We have been honored and honored with gratitude in all ways. Yeah, I'm not alone.
Who have stewardesses in the dockina throughout generations.
We will teach other students to know and honor Native Americans.
That's fantastic. This is great.
The idea is that maybe this statement can be used before meetings that occur in the area or it could be signs that are posted around. It can be used in a couple of different ways.
That's really cool. So you're saying that like, for instance, at school board meetings, we could open up the school board meeting with this statement? Or at, you know, like assemblies or where concerts and things? And are you guys thinking of making signs and putting them in places?
Yes.
Like where?
Uh.
The hallways in the school.
The classrooms.
The libraries.
The lunchroom.
Yeah, the library.
Are you thinking of putting them in places only at KES?
No, I'm at the library down there.
Oh, okay, the town library.
Yeah.
You guys think about other places too, you thought would be good.
The church.
Lots of people.
I didn't. Um, the, I'm, the, and it's on my graveyard.
You guys talked about the
Say, you can say it out loud.
What did you say?
The town hall.
Oh, yeah. That's a great one.
This is some of the ideas.
Sawyer, work.
Your church.
Egg food, brownies. Those are fantastic ideas. I love that you're doing this because you're right, this is, this is the land. I'll, that's, that's a great idea. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you for taking that.
Does it need to be voted upon?
I was wondering that, so I
Have to use at meetings?
Well, I think, I think, I think we might, we might vote upon it, would we vote on it? Or we can just choose to do it every
Yeah, you don't, you don't need to make a formal, but you definitely would want to make a statement that you'll start reading this in
Yeah.
Formal in future courses.
Yeah.
Yeah, do we, do we need some time to talk it through and maybe think about signage or items like that?
I, it sounds to me like that's, that's not you guys. I think that for, they're just bringing it to us to see if we will open our meetings with it, right? Yeah. We don't really give permission for them to put it up anywhere else. I don't think. Yeah. We're just supporting you in doing that, that's a great idea.
That's what they wanted to was to know if you supported this idea.
I support this idea. Should we, should we, can we take a vote formally support this idea? All right, then I move that the Kensington School Board formally supports the idea of the third graders enacting an acknowledgement statement.
Land acknowledgement.
A land acknowledgement.
Statement.
Statement. All right. Do you have a second?
I can check in.
Any discussion? How do you vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you so much.
You did it there, Mater.
That's fantastic. All right, so if we could please have this added to the agendas from here on out? And then we can, we can speak it in the, at the beginning of each, of each meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, school.
Thank you for taking the time to hear us.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, third grader, each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was wonderful.
Wait, wait. I'll give it a minute.
He goes, you may die.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have anything they want to say as part of public input? Nope? You? No, okay, you've said all you
I said my piece.
You've said your piece. Okay, great. All right, so then we will move on, but public input remains open. Um, so, this is not the agenda. Um, and so if anybody has anything or comes up with anything or comes in and needs to say anything, we will stop the meeting and and welcome them to speak. So, uh, moving on is the minutes for October 12th. Uh, the public meeting minutes, uh, which are included in the packet. Did anybody have any amendments or anything to say about the minutes? Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll move that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and then also the non-public minutes from October 12th. Are there any amendments to that?
None here.
Okay. So then I'll move that we approve those as well.
All second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So moving on to committee reports. The policy committee, Josh has the last thing.
Yeah. All right, so there's five policies that we have materials today. I don't think it's the best use of time to go through and kind of look at each one page by page. But I can mention that these were discussed at the policy committee with a goal on periodically reviewing them. Um, so they're brought before us with no recommended changes. However, I do think it's important that we obviously read through them and, and take a look. Um, we can really kind of go through this in two options. Like we'll give you a quick sentence on, on each one.
Okay.
And we can vote to approve them tonight. Or we could wait and approve them in the upcoming meeting. Normally, we kind of have to see it in one policy, or see it in one meeting and then renew and approve one on the next one. But given there's no recommended changes, I don't think there should be any changes here.
Okay.
Kind of throw that off for consideration. But just kind of going through the names here, these don't necessarily line up with what we have um, in the chronological order within the agenda. But you have, uh, policy code DI, fiscal accounting and reporting. We'll just read just a quick summary here, half of this document. But that policy is designed to ensure proper recording of financial transactions and verify parties responsible. Um, financial control preparations and reporting. Purchasing is another one in here. Um, collection of rules that control the requisition process, purchasing policies on creative policy structure that is aligned with the organization's strategic purchasing requirements. That one's pretty brief, as I'm sure you can see. Let's see, the next one, investments. Uh, this is one that does require an annual review by the board. Um, talks through requirements for investing, kind of, uh, goes through the three key objectives. Um, and then talks through the standards of care. Uh, again, in this one, no working changes. Fraud prevention and fiscal management. Guidelines and delegation of responsibilities to prevent loss of the public funds arising from fraud, employer error, financial impropriety, irregularity. Um, we'll see again in there, there's some outlines and, um, discussion around controls to prevent fraud. Um, and then finally bidding requirements, I believe this one's the shortest of the five. Uh, I believe the limit that is called out is $10,000. Um, and if you have, um, something that's going over bid that's over than $10,000, you need three bids. To essentially do due diligence and make sure that you're getting, um, an accurate quote there. So again, it's a lot of information to kind of throw at the group, but no recommended changes.
Okay, I, I read through them and they were fine. I did have one question about the bidding. I mean, this is, this is, um, it says it, uh, it requires shall be based on at least three competitive bids. What, what is the protocol if you only get one bid or two bids? I mean, you can still go for, it's just, you have to entertain three, at least three.
That does happen, uh, in some circumstances where it's like really a specific project.
Yeah.
And as long as we're trying to obtain three.
Okay.
Then we're following our policy, which does happen. And we will tell you that when Mr. Lister does a lot for our facilities or Joe and Becky, uh, that does happen.
So it happens when the account is up, right, put it up there.
That's, that's what I was thinking of, yeah.
Only one.
Yeah. Okay.
Josh, can I add one thing?
Yeah.
Couple of the other boards have already approved all as, uh, these in one motion. The one recommendation they asked is that the language be gender neutral. So no longer saying, is there her designated, just saying designated. So that language moving forward is gender neutral. Um, so this would be one to add on that I would recommend.
Sounds good. Sounds good to me, too.
So Chris, would we, could we approve that now with that notion?
Yep, with that motion now. We, you'd approved the five policies as presented with the one addition that all language is gender neutral throughout each policy.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
That sounds fine to me. All right, so you didn't have any, I mean, you, you've gone through these more, more thoroughly than I have.
Yes, I've looked them through. I don't see any issues with what we have here.
I didn't either, but I still defer to your
Well, that's why I can, I can take a look at it and had taken a look at it, but I didn't want to just go right ahead with things unless the two of you knew how to call it.
Yeah, no, I look, yeah, I look at it. All right, so, um, so I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve all five uh, of the presented policies with the, uh, with the one change that we are making the You word these things so well. Or, uh, to make the language gender neutral on all of them.
I can second. You can go ahead and look at that in the way that you set it before.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Just want to add one more thing. As you'll see, Josh will be presenting, um, really trying to clean up the policies to give the policy committee, so it's not all jumbled. So you'll start to see them come themed like they did.
Yes, that's great, yeah.
So each month, you'll start to see like special life come in and then safety and security. So as they come in, and they'll also be coming in orders of priorities. So if we're missing policies, um, and Josh will be able to walk through the board through that. But that's just kind of a change we tried to help with policies since there's so many.
Great.
Yeah, so we spent a few minutes talking through these five policies, but then a large portion of the meeting was really going through that. Uh, you know, the, the priority discussion that Chris just mentioned. So Heather and team pulled together a full comprehensive list of all of the policies. Um, and they color-coded them, um, really kind of in a, you know, like a waterfall type approach. Like, you know, highest priority, medium, low. And of those high priorities, we're going to be looking at those moving forward. Trying to bucket those in themes so that we touch on the high priority policies to review and we bring them in a themed approach in front of the board for approval.
That's fantastic. All right, thanks. Um, all right, did you have anything else under policy?
No, that's it for me.
Okay, great, safety and security.
We have that.
Can I just add something? I know it's not a committee, but we had our annual fire inspection last week with the chief tree. So when he gets the report to us, then I'll submit it as a future board item for us to review.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, superintendent search committee?
Um, we met, uh, last week, I think it was, and interviewed the single, what, I think Esther? And, um, uh, so the, um, the interview process was, uh, the committee members, so, uh, representation from each board plus two from the co-operators board. And, um, the, there was a representative from each of the discussion groups that we had. So there was someone, there was a middle school student, adorable, um, high school student, and they both did really, really well. Um, there was a, a representative from like food service, that, that grouping, community member, uh, teacher, a paraprofessional, um, and an administrator. And, um, all of us, there was 11 interview questions. And so pretty much everybody got to ask a question and then it was kind of open to asking follow-up questions. Uh, and, uh, it was, um, voted that to have Esther be interviewed by the joint board. So that's happening tomorrow night, um, in a public meeting. Uh, and I also, I just want to say that, um, I, being a part of this process, I think this committee has done, um, and I know it seems like I'm biased, but has done a very thorough job of, um, surveying the public, the community, creating these discussion groups. So the 11 questions that we asked, um, last week to Esther were created by the committee. However, they took into account, um, each of the discussion groups had a discussion with, with Esther and, um, walked away with that discuss, from that discussion with either further questions or further areas of, um, concern. So we took all of those and all of the themes from the survey and used those to craft these 11 questions. Um, so while we crafted them, the themes and the ideas and the, the content came from, um, these different stakeholder groups. And so I, I really do think that this process has been, um, very thorough and, and very objective and very, um, very well done. And so, um, it will be good to see this next stuff happen tomorrow night.
Has there been, um, does it seem that there's been, generally speaking, support from the discussion groups? Has there, you know?
Um, yep, all, I, I, I never, uh, Chris, I'm gonna default to you. I never know how much I can say and how much is supposed to not be said.
You can let know of the, of the recommendation of where it was to
Okay, so I guess it's unanimous, it was a unanimous vote.
Oh, okay.
So all, all people present in that room that interviewed her last week communiously voted yes to push her through.
Okay, great, great. And including the representatives of the discussion?
All, uh, yep, the representatives, so, uh, it was all vote, yeah, it was all, um, and, um, of the discussion groups, all of them were positive.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
So all the concerns that came out of it were all just further questions.
Okay.
So they weren't all, none of them had concerns about her. It was more of, we would like more information about this. So that's why we were able to take that information and create questions that'd be able to ask her those.
So then will we be able to find out what those questions were and what the answers were?
Um, no, but we are tasked with, um, only because I don't, it wasn't, you know, I, I, you know, I think you could probably ask anybody about the process. But, um, what we then did is we took that information, tasked each of the school boards. So we have, our task tonight is to create two questions. We each got topics to create questions under.
Okay.
Um, so our topics for Kensington are SEL and student, um, culture.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, technology and classrooms. Uh, so our job is to create a question for each one of those topics. So all the other boards got different, um, topics.
So we'll be doing that tonight. Are we doing that in non-public?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, well, okay, moving right along. This has been like lightning fast hiring.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's incredible. Um, okay, thanks. Did you have any questions about that?
I don't.
Oh. Um, all right, so the Kensington school study update. We, um, we met last month and we'll be meeting again in December. We, um, I'm sorry, I forgot to say thank you because that's been a lot of work that you've
Yeah, it's lightning fast because we're non-stop.
Like you guys have been constant, I, I actually did get to attend one of those meetings. And I was fascinated and really wished I could have been on that committee, but you were obviously the better person for it. Um, so it was really fun that you did.
All the work that went in before the committee and all the questions that were thrown around and concerns and the fact that
That was a long meeting, yeah.
You know, that we had all of that at the outset and the committees coming together.
It's been a lot of work.
Yeah. It was a long process.
But it's an important decision, so it sounds to me like they definitely
They're not taking it lightly, yeah.
Their due diligence on that one.
Absolutely.
Um, okay, great, so, um, sorry, so, so the school study update. So we met and we are looking into, um, we're still kind of coming up with ideas on, um, on we seem to be balancing still that kind of like, what does our dream school scenario look like and also what can we do? Um, we talked about the wellness wake-up and how, you know, the, how that has, the impact of that, what has worked about it? What still needs some work on it, um, you know, about that. Um, uh, something about Chris needing to call the state of Texas to see how they do some things. Um, we had, we had some teachers say, I'm gonna call this school and see how they're doing this cool idea that they're doing. So we're still kind of coming up with ideas. Um, and I'm really excited because the teachers, I, I had asked, what I would like to see is well, if, if we could build school from the ground up and just, just reimagine what school looks like, what would that look like? So, um, hopefully next month we can talk about that. Did you have anything to add to that?
No, I'll take it.
You, you
No, I think we are starting to, you know, take some steps with a few action items. Wellness Wake Up is one of them. And we'll see another action item in the budget when we review that later. So I do think we're starting to see some movement towards things that would make our dreams come true.
I was seeing, yeah, I mean, and I was seeing some, um, oh, yeah, that's true. Um, I was seeing some, some positive feedback from, from all of that, so I'm really excited about that. I, I'm really excited for us to do, kind of customize the school to what actually works best for the people inside of it.
Unlike the lightning fast superintendent search committee, this is a slower-paced committee. We are making progress.
We are definitely making progress.
Different work.
Yeah.
Different, very different work.
In, in terms of progress, is it, is the, the big, kind of tangible so far, the, the Wellness Wake Up program?
That's the first actionable one that you, that you see.
Okay.
That was sort of, you know
Okay. Now, I don't want to say that, just, you know, knowing that I get some positive feedback from my son, he seems to really
Yeah, my kids love it, too.
Yeah, my, yeah, the kids, I think, really love it.
Yeah.
Is it going okay otherwise?
Yeah, I mean, we have like some logistical stuff that we need to work out with just different offerings and staffing and that sort of thing. But, um, the idea behind it, I think everybody's really, um, seeing the kids starting the day in a positive way.
And it's kind of giving them a little more prep time, the teachers.
On the days where they're not hosting, um, an activity, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been super helpful for our special education staff to find time with our teachers to do consults.
Yeah.
For some students. So it's, yeah, it's been helpful for lots of reasons.
Hey, it's my favorite committee that I've, so it's not technically a committee, but it's my favorite thing that we've done because it's just, it's great, it's very helpful.
I like it because there's snacks.
Oh. That's so good.
I take my snack, my rule of snack duty very seriously.
I'm very food-driven.
Except I think that last time I maybe didn't.
I do, I'm bringing some back, come back to my head.
Okay.
It's gonna be a long meeting.
We're gonna eat that. Okay, great, so, um, all right. Um, moving on is a general correspondence.
Yes, you have invitations.
What?
For Oh, no, wait, no, wait, who's mommy? Oh, no, we, come on, yeah, then, who must be mommy? And
School board. School board letter.
The children do them themselves.
This is great. The student, all right, this out loud. Please come join us for, you know, school board letter. Please come join us for, for our KES school parade, Thursday, November 17th at 1:30. The students from kindergarten, first and second grade have been working cooperatively to present you with the KES school parade. After reading Balloons Over Broadway by Melissa Sweet, the students were inspired to create their own event. They learned about the evolution of the Macy's Day Parade and how balloons changed throughout history. Each student had a hand in creating a variety of components in the celebration. We welcome you to come to this exciting program. All are welcome, leave alone here. That's fantastic. And I'm gonna put it in my book right now.
They have been working, yes, you see some of the
The props, yeah.
Yes. Yes, Gerald.
Paying attention to the giraffe, of course.
Cool.
I've heard a lot about the giraffe, so
It's like pretty much our school mascot now.
It's been a favorite.
Cryin' rockies out the window, yeah.
What is his name?
Gerald.
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 Yeah.
Okay, great, 1:30. Hi, if I don't write that down, right now? Okay, well, thank you very much. These are beautifully painted, too. Was there any other student? Are we any other general correspondents? Oh, I see your question, sure.
Yes, well, no, I put it in my board report.
Okay, as long as we hit it, I'll patch the letter.
Yeah, well, I can do it now. Um, we, I, I wrote about it, I believe, in the board report.
It is in your board report.
We, um, received a $15,000, um, robotic STEM grant. So, which is amazing.
That's really cool.
Sarah McCarthy, our STEM teacher, attended a workshop this fall. Um, and it was one of those, should I go, should I not go, we're short people, you know, one of those, like, I don't want to be out at the bill. I'm like, no, you really want to go, this is something you've been wanting to do for a long time. So she went, heard about this grant, applied, and we got $15,000, so
Thank you, miss McCarthy.
Super, super excited, um, about that and just all the ideas that she has already on, um, what we can do and buy and really focused on coding and robotics and
That is so cool.
That's great.
You know, thinking about how, um, entering a small team into a competition this spring is part of it, so
Oh, that's so fun.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's super exciting, yeah.
But attach that letter if it's okay to the board as part of the committee?
Yeah.
Please do.
Sure. That's what I wanted under correspondence.
Okay, great. All right, so all, all good news. Um, so then the SAU Communications and Community Engagement Committee, we have not yet met, but we will be soon.
I think we need to, it's a January joint board, I think, agenda item.
Okay.
What that will look like and who's gonna facilitate.
Okay.
But yes, that is, that is the plan.
Great.
I think that, I, I think part of the superintendent hire is whoever
Facilitating that.
Whoever's going to be in that position will help decide what that
That sounds, that sounds great.
Okay. So that came up at the interview, um
We, we had, just for the people in the room who are not at the, so you, um, we, at a joint board, uh, meeting, we, we decided that we really wanted to focus a lot on communications and community engagement and there should be a committee to do so. And it was just kind of something that was agreed upon. And then everybody went their separate ways and so fortunately, I was, I was like, who, who's gonna do this? But you guys made it happen, so, um, yeah, that's great. I'm glad that we're, that that is on the, uh, on the horizon. Uh, okay, so business and financials.
Okay.
Molling her up.
So thank you for signing the manifest. So two things, I put in the current year budget. So we had some expenses across various areas as we started the school year, but the, the one thing is, is at the beginning of the year, our accountant covered all of the special transportation until we know what the cost per unit was. So she was able to relieve some expenses.
Okay.
Um, so that's just, uh, adjusting the encumbrance. She was, um, overly aggressive at the beginning of the year.
That's great. So that's 29 back, 29 to 5?
Releasing the encumbrance, yes.
Okay.
So when we came last month, she had, uh, uncovered the entire
Okay.
Budget.
Okay.
Um, but we realized we needed
Great.
No, that might change it.
As of right now.
As of right now, yes.
As of right now. Uh, so based off of current bills and the first bills we received, that was the projection at the time of the report.
We won't go on a shopping spree, but that's fine.
Um, so there's no unanticipated revenue at this point in time. Um, we did have some additional revenue, but it's going to be planned revenue, that's part of the tax rate. All districts got, it's, they call it HB 1221, I think it was, is, um, refund from the Hampshire retirement of the about 7.5%. So, that did, that is part of your planned revenue though, that's not unplanned, so that did go into the tax rate that just got set yesterday.
Okay.
Um, so do they have any questions on the current year? So I also put in your budget, or put in your board pack, the proposed budget for next year, and I also made a little colorful chart for you guys.
Well, you have a mind, you're a show.
So, I know tonight is gonna be your first look at the budget, I don't know, you don't have a budget workshop with Kennedy and Chip at the beginning? Okay, well, tonight's the first look at the budget, so I put a few things in here for you. Um, first is the pie chart, what I did is I grouped the expenses into the different categories that we have. You'll see most of our budget is people. The next thing I did is, the next two different things in your pack is a breakdown of the people. So, if you see the first line, the proposed budget's two point one three four million, the second page is the breakdown of what makes that up, by line. And then if we have questions on either who's in that line or how many people are in that line, the next section what I did is I broke it down even further to say, in that line, this is who resides there and how many people are in that.
Okay.
Um, and then I attached the line by line budget for you. And I know Becky might have some highlights on what increases and decreases we had, if you only talked to any of them.
From the front page?
Or anything, any additional?
Um, yeah, I,
Not line by line, but just highly?
Or just super high level?
Um, I think some of the, the biggest drivers, um, was a shift in our special education costs. Um, that would be one of our, um, larger percent changes. Um, we also have some people shifting back into our regular budget that had previously been paid for by grant funding the last few years. So we've been able to use some IDEA funding and ESR funding, um, to cover salaries for the last few years and we're not able to do that moving forward, so those people are coming back into our regular budget, so that's also a fairly significant increase as well.
Is that the ESY, SE related services, mom?
Um, sorry, I have a wrong chart.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um.
This one?
What page, what page are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm on page one of seven of the, of the line item and then right in the middle of the second section right here.
Yes. The ESY, um, ESY is extended school year, so that's, um, for salaries during summer schooling.
I'm sorry, it's the line above it.
Yeah.
I'm s-
Sorry, related services for instruction.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Fifty seven, five.
That one. Yeah, so, yeah, the large majority of that line is a shift from grant covered positions and back into our regular budget.
Okay, got it. Okay.
And then the health insurance, the fifteen point six percent GMR is included in here as well.
That was in my thinking bubble, but I was gonna let you share that because I know I'm the one.
That's why, he was probably looking at me.
I'm aiming for that one. You can better speak to the GMR than I can.
You did a nice job keeping it inside your thinking.
Thank you.
She's just looking at me, she says.
That's out of our control, right?
That's out of our control.
That's the area that jumped on the budget this year, we're projecting it to jump again next year, is that?
Again?
Or is?
I hope not, I mean, this past year was zero.
So, I've been taking an average?
You could average it at seven something, I hear.
Okay.
Um.
I think we had budgeted at eight, correct, or eight something?
That was what we thought the GMR was.
So you're, you're saying?
The, the, we had started the budget at eight, but then we got to fifteen point six when we realized what it really was. I mean, since I've been here, it's been anywhere from six and a half to zero, now at fifteen, I, I have no idea.
Yeah, with, I, I guess I'm, I'm just asking that question, knowing that we talked about that in the budget meeting. Not the joint board meeting, but the prep meeting and, you know, the, the plane meeting before that.
Mm-hmm.
So, is what we're looking at here, what we're expecting it to be next year, is that?
So this would be, so the FY twenty four budget would be the budget that we would vote on in the springtime for next year.
Yeah, yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah, so fifteen point six percent is the maximum rate, but if we budget for anything less than that, we're at risk.
Sure.
So we don't know.
Yeah, it could come in a little bit less.
Oh, okay.
Probably won't, but it could.
Right.
Yeah, sure.
So, yours?
Where is that? I'm not finding it.
So if you, it's the twenty nine hundred section?
Eighty six, eighty six.
Thank you, yeah, oh yeah, okay.
It's health insurance, you'll see it's gone up twenty four percent.
And so that's also a combination of changing people's plans.
There is, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Molly, just want to remind the board that you, when you budget, you budget for where people are at currently, right now, in that production.
Correct.
So that, someone does change up or down, it does have a, an effect, we always budget to what we know.
Yes, so, um, yes, Chris is correct, now, if we know someone who's just getting married, we might think about what could come next. Um, but for the most part, we budget for what we know today.
Okay.
Special education transportation, if they jump up, they're involved in that?
Yes, that would be a change in student need.
And Molly, just, this cover page is the high level summary of what's,
Yeah.
So, did, did we, did we touch on contacted service, is, was that?
Uh, sorry, I just said contracted, my bad.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so what would contracted services be then?
Um, those are mostly special education, um, specialized, um, teachers or, um,
Nurses, is that what?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, they're, they're more specialized in the services that they provide, so they're not a member of our staff. We contract with them to come to the building to work with students.
And, okay, and, and I know we talked about having a, a special needs student next year, where there was some cost associated with the school they're coming from, is that? Is it?
It's all reflected in this budget.
Yes.
Got it. So those are costs though, that now, that sit on us?
We anticipate to be ours next year.
Okay, got it.
And so when we did this, Molly, I, I don't have the exact figure, I think we said ninety percent of this budget was, uh, things out of our control because of, of needed by contract or, or, um, IEP need, that needs to be in there, so when you see that large number at the end,
Yeah.
that is the rationale, I'll cut there, we, we can step through that, but again, it's the first book for you to look at and digest, and we can dive into it from any recommendations you have, yeah, in December.
Is there, and it might already be in here and or something that we can talk about next time, a way to look at that ten percent that is in our control, to focus our attention there, cause obviously ninety, ninety percent, yeah, it's not, we can't do much about it, so.
Um, so, I mean, so basically, in anticipating that conversation, cause that's
Yeah.
generally the small portion of the pie that we can talk about.
Right, yeah, sure.
That it's supplies and equipment, um, and student body activities, I mean, it really just comes down to kind of.
No field trips, kids.
We need a, we need a HVAC unit.
Without, um, you know, without touching into programming and, um, right, the facilities, yes, which, that I wouldn't recommend.
Right.
Yeah, I would, that would go for the low.
No, 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 yeah, we went through all that.
We, we're basically talking about supplies and activities.
Yeah, yes, Becky's right, and if you read the line by line budget, that, you'll be able to see which is discretionary, which is not.
Okay. This, this, that's in here, the line by line?
Yep, it was in the board pack too, but I touched it in here for you as well.
Okay. Yeah, we can. Yeah, this is helpful, so when we take this to kind of digest it, we can go through and see that, okay.
And if you guys have any questions, you know where to find me and I see most of you on the daily, so.
That's what I appreciate, yes, yeah.
Yeah, do we wanna, uh, we, do we wanna kind of go at least, um, through, maybe not line by line, but category by category, just, or?
Yeah.
Maybe you wanna?
I think, I mean,
Like just look at regular education and then, so special, and then, or do you wanna, do you want time to?
Yeah.
I think I, 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 I have two thoughts, one selfish, um, mostly because we're, if we could expedite this meeting, cause I think tomorrow night's gonna be
A long one.
A long one, so, and I, I'm someone who needs to like look and digest, but that's me, so I'm, I'm open to.
How about this, if you, if there's anything that you want to, want us to know?
Want us to look? Yeah.
Yep, so the one thing that I had mentioned before that would be popping up, um, which was, came out of our, uh, school committee.
Yeah. Yeah.
You'll notice under the, on the first page, under regular education, the salaries of temporary employees, that's a fancy way to say substitute. Um, we did add, um, fifteen thousand dollars to that line, um, because we would like to request, um, a permanent sub in the building. So one person who's designated just to Kensington, um, so that regardless of who's out that day, there is a person that is familiar with our building that is a member of our staff and can pop into any classroom at any given time. Unfortunately, still to this day, we only have one day this school year where our entire staff has been present. Um, we almost had it last Monday and then I was out and I ruined it for everybody. So that, that is a significant addition to that line, but it's a position that we feel will help bring continuity to what's happening in classrooms when teachers have to be out.
And also provides a, this is something that I've gotten the benefit of hearing about, being on the school study, um, uh, uh, commission and, and it's, it's, it, it seems to be the number one concern of teachers right now is the need for subs. Because it just seems like there have been so many days when you guys are just like one person away from closing school down. Like it's, it's, it's been kind of scary.
We had several weeks there where there were six or seven people out at a time, and that's for a small school like us, that is really stressful.
And we're entering into this cold and flu season.
Yeah. And I guess too, I just wanna make note, it's not really, it's not like all COVID related, like life happens still to, with teachers and families and kids.
Right, it's, Yes, yeah.
And so, um, while a piece of the absences this year have been COVID, it is just one piece of why teachers are out. I think too, I had said at the meeting that, um, the last thing I want is teachers not to attend their professional development opportunities, cause we don't have a sub for them. Um, math being a great example, it's one of the best PDs that we've had in years and years and years, and I don't want teachers to say, well, I can't go to math today because I don't have a sub for my room. Nope, you need to go to math, cause that your professional development is important too. So this person, a person would really help making sure teachers are getting their professional development too.
One. So that's a big jump on that line.
Mm-hmm.
We've covered special ed.
Yeah, we've talked about, um,
Um, I'm curious, going back to that first one, the professional services for curriculum development, um, what, what is that?
What number is that?
It is, it's the, it's four down from, or three down from what, where we just were.
Yes.
Um, yeah, that's like, so if I, um, work with somebody or hire somebody to work with our staff on a particular, um, topic, like, um, maybe project based learning, or maybe I bring someone in to do, um, some team building or some social emotional learning.
Okay.
It's, it's if, if we choose to bring someone in to work with our staff to,
It's just part of PD?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Where's that one, Jenny?
It's three down from the permanent sub line, it's on the first page, um, eleven, eleven hundred five, zero, three, two, nine. Okay. So these are all making sense. Student body activities, I would assume that that number is, the change is so high because of COVID, there weren't many student, but it's probably coming back to normal. I'm looking on page two in the top, I'm just looking for big changes on the side, basically.
Yes. Yeah, because we, for many years, we didn't have, like, we didn't have schoolwide assemblies, that sort of thing.
Right, right. Okay, great. Okay.
Anything else that you want to say about that?
Those are, OT was coming from the grant. She was, or she, she was. Yeah, shall we? I'm under special ed, but yeah, the increase on, under health services was the, um, additional nurse, uh, position that we have, uh, in the building.
Oh, I didn't realize that, that's great, okay. Is that the, which one is that, under health?
Yeah, for health services, you'll see eighty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
It's listed as a contract service on this, the graph?
Yeah.
Yep, additional nurse.
That's, that nurse isn't available to all students, correct?
It's required.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, that is not like a building level, it's extra nurse.
Correct.
Okay.
It's required, okay.
It's, it's a part of NIP, I'm assuming.
Oh, I see, right, right, okay, got it.
Yeah, we can do it.
Yeah, okay, that explains that.
And the, uh, OT and the physical therapies increases, those are ones shifting back to us from grants.
Yeah.
Right.
And the OT.
Um, the other,
OT and which ones?
The OT used to be a, as a new employee, and we said,
Yeah, and next year will be shifting to Kensington employee. Um, the other, which I think is looped, um, I'm trying to think where, um, the preschool, um, was that just with Dunder Special, on the side?
So if, if you look on this page, or on this one, on the second, uh, the second report, I put everybody's names and what's mine there.
Okay, well, she, but she's,
So.
Look at you.
She's not ours, we pay Brentwood, remember?
Oh.
So, also what you, so we, um, started our preschool program with Brentwood, um, last year, which has been lovely and we have, um, we actually currently have eight students over there in the preschool right now. We do give a portion of the preschool teacher's salary as well as a portion of the, um, paraprofessionals in there, forty, forty percent of those salaries.
Okay.
Um, we used ESR money for the last years to do that, because it, um, absolutely fit the criteria of using ESR money with our increase in preschool need population, um, so that will also be shifting back to us, cause the ESR money is, um, all gone.
Got it.
Yeah. But you definitely a position we wanna continue with, there's, there's definitely need for us to have, um, a place for our youngest students to receive support.
That's, yeah, that's great.
I believe the notes is showing up under the, um, special ed related services for instruction.
Okay. Okay.
That's up fifty seven?
Yeah, got it.
So we're looking at like a twelve point eight percent increase, we normally try to keep that around.
I think Lester's three or five, like something like that, yeah, it's, it's each one of those years, it's, it seems like everything's coming back to us after having been taken care of by grants or other entities.
Three or five?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying, so, I would say we try to keep it around in three percent, because that's typically what inflation's around.
Mm-hmm.
But right now inflation's much higher than that, um.
Yeah, I agree.
The rate is is higher than the rate of inflation.
I guess it, the question becomes, what's realistic, I guess that's the question.
Not three.
No, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think, I think it's, this is one of those years, I, I, it doesn't seem to me it's gonna be the kind of situation where now twelve is the new normal. I mean, I, I think, it, it just seems there's a massive confluence of, of expenses that suddenly are ours. And it's all happening in the same year, so instead of it being five percent increase as opposed to a three percent increase over five years, it's twelve all at once, I'm thinking.
Yes, and can we get it lower, and what does that look like if we can, and is this, I, is this a new norm, is this a bad year? I, you know, I, these are rhetorical questions, obviously, but I think, I think we need to consider what that means of impact and.
Well, I think it'd be a great idea, you had said that you would give us just, just a highlight of all of the things that are within our control for us to look at. Um, I know that, that, I, I, I have been convinced that the, that the permanent sub thing is not something I wanna mess with. I think that that is really necessary to the functioning of the teachers in the school. But it, it's always absolutely, I think that it's, especially this year, we should be taking a very, very, very close look at everything that we possibly can. Because this is a huge, I mean, that's, that's, whether, whether it's under our control or not, it's a big pill to swallow.
Right. Right. I, yeah. I yeah, and also with the permanent sub, that's also gonna decrease the regular sub line a little bit, knowing that we're not gonna they're all on the same line, but it's it's
It's offset.
It's offset a little bit not needing a daily sub every week too.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. So it's not actually, that's not that big of a change. It's just shifting.
So we we increased it fifteen thousand because there's there would be the cost would be more for a permanent sub, but we wouldn't need the same amount of daily rates.
In other words, it's not a full salary.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the fact that if you get stuck in looking at the percent change, you see a hundred percent for the for the new sub being brought in, but that's
Right. That's not that's not like it's not.
I believe that his drivers here were highlighted on the first page from.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, there's some I'm sure there's some stuff that we can do about it, but there's others that would be harder, but it's the fault of you that we need to be focused on this.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Uh we'd love any recommendation you want. One thing that I'm hearing is that if we came back um and show you out of that twelve percent what really we would be able to control contractually, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's some of we just can't like we have to all because of the federal IDA grant, we have to put this back, which now school-related.
Yeah. Right. Right.
Because last year was a two point eight eight percent increase.
Yeah.
So if we can show you that really if these other factors weren't here, this is what our budget would be.
That would be great. I would yeah, I would like to know that, what what it would be if this was not.
Because I think that is how we have to present it to the public is that we and we know it's a large percentage. However, these are all of our kids and this is how we have to operate.
For sure.
Because we have many times that.
Well, in other words, it's not like we're adding twelve percent more to the budget is being added whether we want it to or not.
Yeah.
Right, because we said what would we couldn't think of where we would cut.
Yeah, yeah.
And we met several times.
Literally sat there.
I I I I totally respect that. I but I think I think to 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 do our due diligence to the public, we still need to like look at it.
I do too, I would. I'm just saying, I'm sorry.
Hundred percent.
We do and we need to realize we're presenting to the public two point eight eight percent versus twelve point eight percent.
Yeah. Right, right.
And so we need to have our we need to really understand it and really make sure
Yep.
in our heart of hearts, there's nothing else that we can push till next year that we can cut. I mean.
Yeah.
And I think it's fine. We just wanna make sure we've had that conversation. So if we cut ten thousand dollars from the supply line, then we need to make sure that parents are ready for
Right.
Yeah.
a letter that has a larger list of this this supplies that your kids need for school this year, you know, so I just we wanna talk through all of that.
Sure, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see.
That's exactly that's that's exactly right. It's gonna I mean, I know that that's asking like for a lot of time, but I think I mean, we we need to whatever it is we bring to the public, I need to be able to defend.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean that's what I'm saying, you know. Yeah, do you think it makes sense with this year being so unusual to have a budget workshop? I know a lot of other districts.
And open the public to it or no, or just this?
Well, it's I know other districts, it's it's a public meeting, but it's usually just us hashing through the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Like I know I just came from East Kingston before and I know they just set up a budget workshop where we talk through the budget with the board um.
I would very much like to do that, because I'm the one who has to speak at the deliberative session this time or at the at the at the hearing this time, so.
We could do it outside of the board meeting, not during the board meetings at separate times.
Yeah. Yes, yeah. So some districts choose to do it outside of the board meeting, just have that additional time to really understand and walk through all aspects of the budget.
I think that since usually we don't do that, but I think that since we are asking to take a very, very, very close look, just so that we can at the very least say, okay, we really have taken a look at this and we have we have found what we can, et cetera, um it might be a good idea this time around to do that.
Do you just set it? What's I I guess I'm having a hard hard time understanding what's different from that versus just really hashing it out in a public school board meeting.
Well, this would be a public meeting, but it wouldn't be a school board meeting, so it would be because that that's I think the idea is that that's gonna take some time. So not adding it to another meeting that also has all of the other stuff in a meeting.
But we have to add another meeting, yeah.
It would add another meeting, but it would not be in the same one. Should be like two two-hour meetings instead of one four-hour meeting. Just as an example.
Yeah. When when's the vote for this?
Um we usually have to have everything ready by January.
Sent in January, yeah. Yeah.
Just before the public hearing.
Yeah.
Which is the Jan- is February. Because after the public hearing is when we send the stuff for uh for the deliberative. Yeah.
For the, yeah.
Where we are where when I say that, I mean to the D R to print
On the launch, yeah. Yeah.
the stuff to post for the deliberative.
Right.
So we can make changes.
Yeah, the hearing is on um.
We can make changes until the public hearing.
Public hearing is.
January eleventh.
Eleven.
Right, so you have.
I don't have it. All right, eleven. Well, that's a Wednesday.
Our deliberative session our deliberative session is February eighth.
Okay. All right. But just get used to it, because you know what, Josh? My anniversary, her anniversary, it's always, always a school board thing.
I know.
So get ready, my friend. Your wife's not gonna be happy.
I I got a question to ask here. It we're we had just gone through the which is what is the budget that we just went through and approved and we had went through the school board, uh the joint board meeting.
That's the S A U budget, budget.
That's the S A U budget.
And so that gets dished up in on the individual budget, so that's where you see opposite of the superintendent. That's your piece of the pie of that budget.
Just the industry.
Okay, so this is now coming down to the K E S level.
This is the K E S level.
Yes, for this school, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Mm-hmm. And then you also get the quadrant font too, but we won't go into that.
All right.
We don't have anything on that one. That's just something we have to vote on.
Neither do I, no, I'm not. No, I just say it's part of your tax revenue.
Right, right. So this right here, the S A U assessment.
Yeah.
Our this is our piece of that budget that we discussed at that meeting.
Mm-hmm. I I'm hearing on the side that we included in our next meeting. I mean, I.
I I'm fine with that, but I I I I just don't wanna keep everybody late if we can. And I'm also, if you guys don't feel that you need it, I'm happy to sit with you and just.
Yeah, go through it, you know, where you're finding. I think I I think there's so little that we can move on that we could discuss it in the end.
Okay.
My fear is getting too into the weeds with stuff that we can't do it and you know.
Well, that's what I mean, I mean, I think you're right, it's gonna be short, because that's a good point. It we're just asking you to only bring us the things we can do something about, so that we're not we're not looking at
Yeah.
we're not having to weed through all the things that we have our hands tied on.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I probably won't take that one. Okay, that's fine.
I think so.
Yeah, like what you said.
Got a good agenda item too. We can keep this under really light, just to do that work.
Okay. Yeah, but I mean, and that's a that's a good point. I was assuming it would be, but I I actually don't think it's gonna be a whole lot of discussion.
Yeah. I think if we call it a separate meeting about budget, I might invite
More screen.
Discussion that.
I don't I don't mind that, but but.
Active discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, you mean from us?
No.
Yeah, oh, okay. I I well, I don't care about that. I'm I'm happy if people wanna come take part, that's fine, but um.
No, but they can, right, in the public, in the public meeting, yeah.
Yeah, they can, absolutely. So um that interesting, that's not a reason why I would wanna not do it. But um yeah, if we would have a if it's not the kind of thing where it's just people are gonna be like, oh my god, this is never gonna but I think it's I think it's gonna be a it's a small enough amount of like events for still looking.
Yeah. I just have an productive conversation where it's such a small amount of things that we can shift.
Yeah, then let's do that.
Yeah.
And we'll bring um an itemized um for those for those things like supplies.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We'll we'll bring you. These are the twenty-six things that make up this line.
Sure.
Perfect. That's that would be.
It's perfect.
See exactly exactly what's in it.
That would be awesome. That would be great. So let's get that into summer.
That's true. Don't kill yourself in this situation.
It's already done. You just don't get you don't all of those notes are already done. You just you don't get notes for every line. I don't because it'd be fifty-six pages long.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
But for the ones that you wanna see more detail of, we'll just provide those, yeah.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. So you'll see exactly how much we pay for laminating and exactly how much we pay for it. It's all I noticed.
Brings me to my own limit.
Well, I think I think I think of all yours, this is the year that I we I wanna be able to say that we've done that, so.
Yeah, 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 we need to be.
Yeah, absolutely.
No problem at all. Yeah.
Yep.
So great, I appreciate I really appreciate that, because I know that's a lot of a lot of work, but okay.
It's okay. Molly made me do that like months ago. Don't worry.
Thanks, Molly.
And then I'll just grab the manifolds that you guys already signed with.
I need to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I guess.
Okay. While you're signing them, draft budget review.
Principals report.
Principals report.
Oh. Principals. It's pretty, I know, one of the things. Hello, it's all right.
It's been years.
I already talked about our um robotics and grants, so I don't need to talk about that again.
No.
Um I under positive community culture, I just highlighted some of the things that we've been doing on our community days for the last couple Thursdays. Um on the October thirteenth, the students um went over to the Kensington Fire Department and they were very gracious and had a couple different stations set up for the kids and talked with them about the ambulance and all of the firefighter's gears and they got to practice crawling under the smoke, which they really love. So um the fire department did a great job of hosting our kids over there um for fire prevention week, so we're thankful for that. Um and then on the twentieth, uh that was led by our third graders who've been studying about Native Americans and I'll bet you Musa again here at the C P A, even Trump did that. Um and they sort of led the school, sharing some of what they had learned and they had their outdoor museum. Um and classes got to go around and and see all that they had created, so that was lovely.
We got to see that too.
Yeah.
Very cool, Wendy.
Um and then on the twenty-seventh, we had our fall festival, which were um kind of you know fall-based stations outside. We had a glorious day. Um and um then we ended, you know, the day with our costume parade and thriller dance, which is always fun. So um the kids really look forward to the Thursday afternoons. They see me on a Thursday, be like, what are we doing this afternoon?
They do, yeah.
So they do they do look forward to having a a little bit of time as a whole school each week, so it's fun.
Which is also another, I mean, that was another idea you 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 folks came up with to.
Yeah, we started that last year.
As special programming, which has been really beneficial for these kids and the teachers, and I think it's great.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and then um so tomorrow, we're shifting just a little bit our community times in the morning for our veterans. Um uh and then next week, y'all have your invitation for the parade, because that's our community time. The following Thursday is our K B two parades.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
All right.
It's been a lot of fun. Um and then I think I also wrote about the Lions Club returning um to do the eye screening for our students. Um which again is just um super important for that early detection. Um and they're just really great to work with and have come back to screen kids that maybe they, you know, just needed a better picture or something. Um and we're able to um provide some information for families if there was a red flag, just to get them connected with their local eye doctors, um just to have things looked out again. And so you know, we were able to reach out to a couple of families um so that they can have that followed up with their people. So yeah. Families usually are very appreciative of the the heads of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's all free of free of charge from the Lions Club, so that's great.
Yeah, that's I appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so student growth and academic assessments, state and local benchmarks.
Right.
There we go.
Now Allison wants to get out of here early, so we see how quickly I can go through this.
Oh, sorry. This is part of the data you were you were, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, part of data is me too. So it's a little hack. I will go page by page so that I can explain each one. And I'm just gonna move over here so I can see you better.
Yeah, thank you.
I feel like I'm like at the long Thanksgiving table.
We should, we should, yeah, yeah, I'm like trying to.
Yeah. That's weird.
So this front page, um and I'll actually like first jump into lots of this um P.
For COVID. That's for COVID.
Green, this this first one.
Twenty twenty, just COVID.
So the first page um shows you some summary scores of our state's SAST testing. It's a statewide assessment. Um and it shows um actually the last five years of scores. K E S is kind of like halfway in the middle. And um this is our school scores as compared to the other S A U sixteen elementary schools. So only ours is identified. We're sort of right there in the middle and then the A, B, C, D, E and F are the other S A U sixteen elementary.
And there are two numbers, because there are two grades being tested?
The first number is your school score, the second number after the slash is the state score, so it gives you it gives you a comparison to how you're.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
So you can see prior to COVID in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, um our scores, um you know, we're we're quite proud of those scores and proficiencies in the eighties and nineties for our um English language arts, a little bit lower in math. And um but all of them above the state averages. Um we then had our little flip in twenty twenty with a lovely red column of COVID. Um and then as you can see, when we've come back from COVID, our proficiency levels have have dropped, which was um expected and as did everybody else's in the country.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um and um so there's nothing really that surprises me about our scores and the drops that I'm seeing um after COVID. Um I'm not sure how much analysis of that you want me to give. I I will just have the board keep in mind that we did not have a reading specialist in the building for a year and a half because she became a remote teacher. Um so we did have eighteen months where children were not receiving reading intervention.
Mm-hmm.
I also remind you that our STEM teacher be also became a classroom teacher, so we also had um an entire school year without our STEM teacher accessible to our students. So to me, there's some um not that I'm looking to make excuses, but there's some logical explanations to why we would see some of the drops in addition to just
Explanations, yeah.
students didn't receive the type of education.
Yeah, right, right.
Um that we normally do here in Kensington. As proud as I am of this building and getting our kids back into school early and in person, um school just wasn't the same, so.
It was the best it could be.
There was there's really nothing that surprises me about these doors, but we're obviously working towards um you know, increasing our proficiencies again back to our pre-COVID levels.
Yeah, I I would just highlight though, I think you should celebrate the successes, because you've grown over the year in all areas, right? And you're you're starting to grow back.
Yeah. Oh, I've got that in these ones. Forgot my getback.
Okay, good. So I'll highlight the positives.
Well, of cour- of course, I'm gonna highlight the positives, Mr. Andruski. Um so if you go to actually your next two sheets, um these are eye-ready testing. These are um computer-based testing. So if you take the next two out that have like the fifteen highlights at the top.
Mm-hmm.
And you hold them side by side like this. So the first one on the left is reading and it's from the beginning of the year from last year. So this is the beginning of twenty twenty-one. And you will see um the little triangle up top showed what percentage of our students were tier one, which is what maybe would translate as at grade level.
Mm-hmm.
Tier two would be needing some intervention and tier three would be needing more intervention. So this was the triangle at the beginning of the year. If you hold that to the end of the year, reading diagnostic, you can see some beautiful growth
Yeah. Yeah.
and how large our green grew in our triangle and how small our red got. So this represents, and then you can see each individual grade levels. I I don't love to talk about individual grade levels, because we're so small and there are some individual, you know, singleton teachers at each grade level. So I don't really love to look at individual grade level.
Yeah.
But just look visually at kind of where our kids started at the beginning of the year and then where our kids ended.
Yeah.
It's really tremendous growth, but I'm super proud of that, um coming coming off the years that we just had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's reading. If you take your next two, which are math and the same sort of um the first one is beginning of year data and then the second one is end of year data, again, you can see um just the beautiful green growth of our um students in what's considered tier one and then tier two. And then by the end of the year, um the tier three was just a very small part of our triangle. So again, super proud of this growth
Yeah.
from students over the year and the hard work of our teachers.
Is it reading one one kid only? There's only one kindergarten? Is that because?
Oh, so we so generally, we don't give um yeah, we don't give the reading to the littlest, the littlest unit of the year.
Oh, here. Okay, that's what I'm wondering, that's why I don't think I have a parent identification or something, okay, okay.
We don't and actually sometimes we don't and we didn't last year. And then I think the first grader accidentally took that last year. We generally don't give a kindergarten and first grade reading at the beginning of the year on the computer. It's just not appropriate.
Okay. Okay, okay. Yeah, that's what I was wondering, that's why.
So. And we do for math, because it's just a different um break, what they're expecting in math, they can.
Yeah. Great.
Why was in grade four, grade four in reading? There's no data in the reading one. There's no data for grade four for the beginning of the year.
I don't know. I don't know why. I I don't know why that didn't show up. That's weird. I can look into that. I'm not sure why that didn't show up.
Okay, I didn't if there was, I mean, it it might just be omitted from the report, but it's it it there wasn't like a reason for it, so.
I didn't even catch that. Nope, I just think that I don't know why that didn't show up on the report.
Okay. That's fine.
But in in reading right now, that Mrs. helps out. Is is there an equivalent in the math?
Yep. We do not have a math specialist, you know, that's something that we've talked about, um having somebody
Okay.
um like a math specialist, um which would be amazing, because Mrs. is very good at what she does with with children and reading.
Yeah. Yeah. Sure.
This is pretty fantastic growth for not having a math specialist.
Well, so kudos to our teachers and and I really do um believe that the math professional development that our teachers have been participating in and has been um I think both inspirational for them, because she's just a really masterful teacher, but I do think it's translating to practice as well and we're seeing good growth from our kids.
Yeah.
All right, so if we put that one away, then the next one is green highlights at the top. And this is what our reading looks like right now, so. And this is what our reading looks like right now, so this is our beginning of the year for this school year in reading. And then um the next one is math. So again, there's nothing surprising to me on these, this looks pretty typical beginning of year data. I know kind of where we're headed and what, what it will look like at the end, but this is um, you know, this is where we're starting.
Great.
Uh again, we don't test kindergartners in reading at the beginning of, of the year. But also, that's all we've got. So I, so at the end of the year, then I can bring the end of year diagnostic, and we can compare this to the growth that can see.
This is fantastic, being able to see this.
Yeah.
This is fantastic, I really love this. I've never, I've never gotten this clear of a view. I'm really glad we're doing this, thank you, thank you for putting that together.
Yeah. So the next couple of things, I'll just go through, uh because these, these first two that I shared, this is the SAST data, which is students in grades three, four, and five. This is the eye ready data, which is mostly second, third, fourth, and fifth. Um, these are both computerized assessments.
Okay.
Um, the next couple of things that I put forward are paper pencil or actual books in front of the students or an actual passage, so this, these, these ones are not on the computer. Um, the first one is the Fanderson now benchmark assessment. Um and this is teachers use this again just to determine where their students are as readers, both their independent reading level and their instructional level. Um, so this is kind of where our kids started, this is beginning of the year data that teachers were collecting. So again, at the end of the year, I can, I will bring you end of the year data, and we can compare um to our proficient, to the proficiency levels. What? But I think too, this, you also see, I mean, overall, you see sixty-six percent. Again, I don't love to look at individual grade levels, because you have some singletons.
Yeah.
But what you can see very clearly is our kids' proficiencies as they're getting older, they're maintaining those proficiency levels.
Yeah.
It's expected, our first grade readers aren't all proficient in reading yet. A lot of our second grade readers are still working on it, like, so this is a really natural progression of where you expect proficiency levels as kids get older.
Yeah.
Um.
No, they're great.
So then the next one that I have highlighted, um more curriculum-based measures again, these are not on the computer. These are actually, they're passages in front of students. Um, they're, they're on the um AIMS web norms. So the first one again is just students in grades two through five. Um, the W C P A M is words per correct per minute, so it kind of, it looks at students fluency. Um, and so we have this data to, for students, and then the one below that is um AIMS with maze, which is more of a comprehension-based um measure. So again, we've got our school-wide data on that. So we always try to have a balance of different types of assessments, so that we're not just relying on one standardized computer test.
And then the bottom one anyways.
And Mrs. Danusis really spearheads all of um the data collection of our reading. So again, she's just a really important piece in the data collection. Um, then I, the next one, um, because we don't have that computer testing at kindergarten and first grade, we do additional AIMS web measures with them, like letter meaning fluency and onset words.
Okay, there it is, yeah.
Um, because this is more appropriate and better information for teachers at that level, because they're obviously not reading passages yet. Um, so you know, this is just collecting data about the kinds of things that they're learning in kindergarten and first grade in a normed sort of way, with the AIMS web norms. The last one that's on that page is the PAL's dyslexia screener that we do for all students. This is actually required by New Hampshire R S A, that we must screen all of our students in kindergarten or first grade by November thirtieth to see if there's any flags um for potential dyslexia, so.
Do you ever, do you ever screen older kids? Is it the kind of thing where like?
Well, they would have, they would have gone through.
Right.
Or screens.
I didn't know if it's the kind of thing where, you know, it might like, symptoms might show up later, not symptoms, but you know, spots.
Yeah, if there's a concern from the classroom teacher, they bring them first to the child study team, and then if they need more information, they might do a special education referral for more testing.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Um, so again, the process of the dyslexia screener, we use the PALs um currently. Um, and then should a student flag, that that family is notified that there were potential flags on the screening, and then an action plan is developed for, you know, supports for that student, so.
Great.
So we've already completed that for all of our kiddos. Um, and then you're leaving, or are you just holding?
Jeopardy tournament.
Jeopardy tournament, okay. Um, then the last thing I just put on here, um, there's no way for me to really quantify this assessment that we do. Um, the last one is called primary number and operations assessment, it's the T N O A. And um really what it is, is a math conversation that teachers sit down and have individually with students. And so they ask questions, sometimes there's minicolleagues from the students, and it's really to get at their mathematical thinking. It's not so much, do you know your facts, do you, but how are you thinking about math?
That's cool. Yes, fantastic.
Here's some examples of, of questions. The first one, they were talking, okay, we're gonna skip count, but we're gonna start at thirty, and then we're gonna count by ten. And now, okay, now we're gonna skip, oh, my, Nita, I'm gonna say, but we're gonna start at three and count by tens. And then we're gonna start, so it, it takes them out of their comfort of, we always start at one, ten, ten, so.
Yeah.
Because that can be sort of just a rote memorization without really understanding what I'm doing and manipulating numbers. And so they ask different kinds of questions to really get kids to think about what they're doing with numbers. And then, so like the second one, read the number sentence, is it true? How do you know? So well, the number sentence as written is not true, and so the kids sort of have to defend their thinking that forty-five is not less than forty-four, um, and they've got to talk about that. So um, you know, and then, or putting numbers in order. So it's forty questions, um, there's no way, I can't really give you a number on that. The information that teachers gather from this sort of one-on-one assessment for kids in math is like super important for them to understand.
Is it giving them, it sounds like it's giving them some, like, the teacher, some understanding of the, of the student's proficiency, but is it also giving them an idea of how many students think more conceptually, how many students think more literally, how many?
How many like need the, the manipul to the one-on-one correspondence to do the counting,
Right.
or they need the hundreds chart to visualize the counting by ten, so yeah. There's really a lot of information that they gather, but I can't give this to you with pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, but it's, I'm, I'm happy, it's happening.
That's fine, no, it's, it's, me too, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I love that.
Yeah, me too, that's great.
Great.
Especially with competency-based, like, I think it's, because kids show how they know what they know in different ways.
Thank you.
So this assessment aligns with that.
Yeah, and also, yeah, I have noticed that, it's, it doesn't seem that they all are being necessarily asked, will you have to give it to me in this way? It's just, you just have to give it to me and show that you can get there.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
And that's great.
So in addition to all of these, teachers design their own assessments, you know, based on units of study in a classroom, but these were just more, um, you know, school-wide things.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's really great.
Thank you, this is great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
I was excited to see this, it's great.
I love that.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh new business.
Okay.
Um, all right, so old business, reviewing the board member orienting, orientation document. I took your uh feedback, my two colleagues, um in wanting not all of the definitions and all of the explanations and everything, and just make it be, here, I gave this to you, just, just the old one. Uh, just, just basically a list of resources.
Okay.
So uh I, I, that is, this is my, this is my, my first attempt at that. Um, I still, at the very bottom, um, I wasn't able to find a, a simple explanation of things like the budget process. If somebody comes in here not knowing anything about the, you know, an S B two uh procedure, you know, how that works every year. So we need to find kind of a, a quick way of explaining that, but um I was able to find a lot of the, the N H S B A, I did find one page with like all of their documents listed. It wasn't one page, it's six pages, but I put that on there. Um, and then I included a few specific ones, like the orientation packet, uh, we would update that every year. Um, effective school board meetings document, that kind of goes through the whole, like, the anatomy of a school board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then I, I, I included the list of all other documents that they have available. And then you would go through that, they would, you know, somebody would be able to go through that. And I, I, I'm thinking we, this is a new member orientation, but I think we could also call it um just general information on school boards, because I would like to make this available to the public. I'm only including links from the New Hampshire School Board Association and from S A U sixteen. There are other uh organizations that give information about, about school boards, but they're not necessarily all um nonpartisan or, you know, um, so I'm, I'm specifically including that. Um, there is some infor- information on the joint board page, so I included that. Um, some of this, I, I think, I think most of this will, would be, it'd be best to just have a conversation on that first meeting, when you have a new person come in, um, and, and give them this ahead of time. Have a look, come with your questions for your first, for your first meeting.
Yeah.
Um.
For the budget process, Chris, is there anything on the S A U website that?
I wasn't finding anything that just explains this process.
I just have the little, I, yeah, I just have the little letter that I usually send to families in December that just sorts like.
Oh. They attach that as an attachment, I wonder.
Yeah, it just, it's like, save the date, you need to be at these three meetings. This is what happens at this meeting, this is what happens at this meeting, this is what happens at this meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And there's, the thing is, is, I, I know for me, when, when the whole concept of this was introduced to me, because I had never participated in any sort of, you know, any sort of town municipal government, school government, anything. So all of this was totally new to me, it was basically somebody sitting me down and explaining it. I found that for several years, it really kind of came down to me going on to the Exeter Baby Troop on Facebook and saying, here's why we need you to come, and going through a whole explanation of this is what happens. There's more to it than just a simple explanation for people to really understand the stakes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, I mean, a new member is gonna be part of that, anyway, so whatever. But I, I think that um if we could have a copy of that, that would be great, and we can attach it to this.
It's very simple, so I'm not sure, you know, how much detail you want about.
Simple's great.
It just identifies like these are the three meetings that you need to be part of.
Simple's great, yeah. That's perfect, and I'll, I'll just attach that to this, that's fine. And then I, I was, I was thinking of adding something like a glossary budget terms, because I came onto this board without having been part of a budget process before. Um, Molly is fantastic at just giving you those answers, and I think that if somebody were in my, I mean, Molly wasn't here when, no, she was. She wasn't here when I was on the budget, that's when I needed help with that. But um, she's, she's available and, and, and wonderful with that stuff. But you know, if, if there's some sort of resource that you know about that we can kind of attach to this, um, it honestly, it might be in the N H S B A on that website somewhere.
Hmm.
But that was just, that was one area that I thought somebody might want to know more about. Um, this also, I think this would be really great to have kind of up on our website so that people who are considering running can have a better idea, because I know that all three of us were.
More of a job description at that point.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
In, in place of a job description, you sound like stuff.
Well. Yeah, I mean, this, this honestly might be a little intimidating, because it's all of the information you could ever want right there. It's not, we're not doing all of this all the time.
Sure, but it can be a resource, I mean, this is something that I'm gonna wanna offer back to.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey.
Of course, yeah.
I think it's a parent or community member to educate yourself as well, I think, great.
Yes.
So once we finalize this, I would love it if we could uh make it very easily accessible
Mm-hmm.
and um maybe even send out an email and inform the parents, hey, this is if you wanted to know more about the um school board process, the school board, you know, what everything is, here's a list of resources to kind of get you there.
That's great.
And we were also talking at one point about having, this is a while, a while back, and it just occurred to me in this moment. We're talking about having a meeting, it was kind of like a town hall, where people could come in and just ask questions about how school board works and how they can, what is important to pay attention to, you know, I mean, that kind of thing. What is actually under, what's our job, what's not our job?
I think we did, and then I think we decided, I feel like we decided that we would be at, or the community days or something, we were gonna be present at something.
Yep, to loop it in with something else that was already happening.
To loop it in with something else, yes, that we would, that the community would be involved in, I feel like we talked about that.
And I was going to, I, I sent, I sent an update in for the Kensington Community News last August. I don't think I actually got the fall one, and then I missed the call for submissions for the one that just came this week. Um, but I'm going to, I'll, I'll contact Pam and ask her to tell me when the next one is, and I'll try to send in an update then. I'm not sure, I never even saw it, so I don't know if it came through or not. Um, so I'll just, I'll get in touch with her. But I like the idea of adding something to the community news, that's, I think, orderly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so yeah, all right, so, so, so Becky, you will send me your letter.
Yep, I'll send the letter, and then if you send this to me um in a document, then I can add it, we can add it to the school board page on the website.
Okay, yeah.
So it would have all the live links.
Yeah, do we know, Jim, if, if everybody has access to this?
That was uh, no, you're right, that's, no, yeah, that was the actual, I went to the website and copied the link. So I'll um, I'll try to access, I'll try to click on that link from another computer.
Could Becky get, oh, well, you know.
The safety and security one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the one you're printing?
There were some, there were somewhere, I would, you open it up and it just opens up in your browser, but it is now saved to your computer. So I, I, I just clicked on copy the link instead of copying the address bar from that, because that was on my computer. Um, and I was wondering if I had missed it on that one, but I think that would, that would go there, but it might be, if it is the case that you have to get there from that page, otherwise they won't let you in, then we'll find a way around it.
Okay, yeah, I know people would drive, it'd be kind of weird, and some passwords would just pop up like that, I just didn't know.
Sure.
If everybody would have the ability to click on it and access it.
Yeah, so I had, so let's see, the committees, I have the policy committee, safety and security, superintendent evaluation. Those are the basic ones, right? Am I missing something? That's it, okay, because we've got other things now, but they're all, they're one-offs, okay.
Those are the three standing, yep.
Okay, so um if you want to at some point just go through and see if you agree that these are the links that I should have included, if you think there's anything else I should include, that would be great.
Sure. Sure.
So you can send it to Chris, send to me, or we can talk about it at the next meeting, that's fine too. Um.
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
Actually, why don't we do that, and then if, if we're okay, we can kind of finalize it, and then I can send it to, to Becky.
Yeah. Okay.
One thing I would just say is that um, out of the joint board typical meetings, you have a budget meeting in December.
Yes. Oh.
The S A U joint board is always October, November is when we do our budget.
Thank you. I, I think I copied this one, it's from somewhere.
So typically, they used to have four meetings, um, in December would be when they do the final budget, but we've moved it up, so that we have all the other budgets in our, our local districts.
Okay. So we have September and then October slash November.
Yeah.
Is it really four times a year, or is it just?
Supposed to be, but it never is.
It has not been four times a year.
Five years ago, twice.
Yeah, it was like twenty times over, twenty times.
It hasn't, it's, it's a lot now, it, I think it's more, closer to six or seven.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so can you?
That's why I said additional meetings are called, and they're needed.
Always.
Can this be sent electronically, so we can just go in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So.
Um, so then I didn't, that was the only thing, is that I, the only standing item here was the, the budget terms or budget orientation. Um, I, I maybe I should just take that out, or just say, you know, maybe schedule a meeting with Molly if you, if you've never been through a budget.
You could give a glossary of terms, it's just to understand it until you sit like Josh is today.
Right.
I don't think you typically, you really get to know until you sit, it's all learn, learn by do, you know, you could tell them.
It might, yeah, it might just be a. Yeah, so I think I'm just gonna take that out then.
Or you could put, like you just said, Jenny, contact.
Yeah, you can always contact Molly if you, yeah.
Well, we're, whoever, I don't know how to say that, but.
Who would say the name, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to do what her position is, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant, yeah, yeah.
Put her cell phone address.
Yeah. She's probably, she's like, I sure could.
Here's what she keeps, he's walking right into she's probably.
Watch the boys in our office, dude.
Yeah.
Keep the cat.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, business, you put the business office, it's not, or Michelle could do that.
Yeah. Okay, business office, great.
Yeah.
Good suggestion.
Okay, yeah, and then um, okay, so that's that. Um, that was. So just going back real quick to the board goals, the data discovery reports, we're doing those.
Mm-hmm.
The board member orientation, that's what this is, board and community relationships, and that's what we were talking about.
We were just talking about that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so maybe, um, maybe we can talk more about that in January.
I was, thank you, I was gonna say January too, yeah, looking at this, the rest of this year, what. I was, thank you, I was gonna say January too, yeah, looking at this, the rest of this year, what do we, we could, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, let's do that. So agenda for January, if we could do the, um.
Community relationships.
Oh my god, Chris, your schedule. Your Google Calendar is just all of the colors. Okay. Let me, sorry, I'm finding where we are. Okay, the revision energy decision. So revision came back and and gave us their final quote. The the, we had thought that there was going to be an investor and there wasn't, and that kind of really changes the landscape there for us. So, so I think, I I I'm thinking we should just table that one, maybe we can, maybe we can revisit it another time.
Yeah.
But this is not the time for a several hundred thousand dollar investment that will pay off in twenty years. So, um, I really appreciate revision coming.
Yes.
And giving such a wonderfully comprehensive, um, plan and proposal. And I love what they're doing. I wish we could do it.
Me too.
But especially this year.
I'm gonna be in California sometime.
Yeah.
Although that's annoying for the budget.
Um, all right, great, so.
So I'll, I'll.
So you guys agree with that?
Yeah, I think yes.
Yeah, I I thought you did, but I, you know, we should.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if the board's okay, I'd, I'll be glad to contact Rachel, uh, the decision after today.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And have some correspondence with her, and said it is on the agenda, we make a decision, and I'll do, I'll take care of that.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, thank you.
People-related matters? No, personnel?
No.
Okay. All right, so we need to go into non-public, under letter B, so.
B.
All right, so, um, uh, I move that we go into non-public, uh, under chapter ninety-one A, three, two, B. Any second?
Give a second.
Okay, all in favor? I at seven thirty-five.